We start.
The clock is well. It's 4:30.
I'd like to call to order the September 17, 2013, meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. As always, we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if you'll join me in invocation. God, thank you for this beautiful place we live with these wonderful people that we work with and live with and associate with. Thank you so much for the changing weather, the fall weather, the football, schools, everything that is associated with fall. God, take care of people who are not having the wonderful times we're having in Boulder, Colorado area, in the naval shipyard, and all the things that are going on that are hard to understand but are very difficult to deal with. Have your hands on the people that are affected by the tragedies in those areas and all the other places in the world where there's unrest and difficulties. Give people comfort. Give them hope. Help us to appreciate what we have here. And most of all, help us to be the best people we can and help as many people as we can achieve what you would have them to be. Amen.
Amen.
In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Commission, it's the duty of every board member to avoid both actual and apparent conflicts of interest. Does any Commissioner know any reason or any conflict of interest that you may have with any matter coming before the board today? If not, we will proceed. We will go into public comment, but first of all, I'd like to recognize Donna Smith. She is here. She is the Buncombe County Association of Teaching Assistance President this year, and we appreciate all of our educators. I know you're getting started back up with the new year, and you're in our hearts and prayers. I know it's a lot going on, a lot of changes, so we thank Ms. Smith for her service and willingness to serve the community. Public comment. The time limit for comment is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any question along with your name, address, phone number, or email with the county manager. Commissioners are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. They should not be polled or asked to directly address, "This is your time to talk to us." Comments should be limited to subjects that are within the jurisdiction of the Buncombe County Commission or pertain to matters upon which we may act. Any individual should address the entire board. Persons addressing the board are expected to observe the decorum of the chamber and to be respectful of everyone in the room. Any person who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts the session will be asked to leave the meeting. The Commission reserves the right to deny public address on any subject previously presented to the Commission. Any public comment tonight? Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You look healthy. You look alive. I've really took note of a seven-member board. You know, I always wanted a seven-member board, but this one seven-member board, I'm just, it's gonna take me a while to evaluate you, so just hang on, because I ain't seen nothing yet. Did you get that? I'd like to see this board, Mr. Chairman, and you members, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to see you address the public comment part of what the chairman is reading each time he reads. I think you need to shorten it, do it like the ethics thing that you do for the members of the board. Make it short, to the point, because what you're doing is no different than what they did at the school board by passing a sensory censor policy, because it's brow-beating the public. You're putting them down, the people that you voted you into this office. It's a slap in the face. Whether you think it or not, the general public is not the people that you need to be slapping around. I've been here for 20 years, and I have been up here, and I've said a lot of things, things that you didn't like, things that you did. You've done some changes on things that I've said, and whether you give him a pat on the back doesn't matter. But I see things change sometimes for what I say. But I think it's need to look at this very seriously, because I think the general public doesn't see it the same way that you see it. And being a lawyer, Mr. Chairman, you sound like you're in the courtroom when you're saying it. And to me, you don't intimidate me, you don't frighten me, you don't even bother me. You're just a human being, and I appreciate that. But I think we ought to be treated that way, too. Now, the other issue is on the LME transition. I am very concerned about the LME. Buncombe County, I've bragged on you many, many times for what we've done on behavioral health here in Buncombe County, and we've got a lot of things in motion. But far as I'm concerned, it's gonna be eroded badly, in my opinion. They're not only looking at 25 counties being connected, they already got their mind set on 35 counties. It's getting bigger and bigger, and it's getting to be, it's not appropriate to say, but, you know, authoritarian kind of thing. People's needs are not being met. Due process is not being given. Complaints are not being heard. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Any other public comment tonight? All right, if none, then we'll proceed. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as it's been published, including adoption of the consent agenda items?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Frost, second by Commissioner King. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. I have a note. Do you want, is it new, do we want to approve the consent agenda specifically? I thought we just, we've always done it in that motion. Is that being covered? Someone wrote, okay. All right, good news. We would like to, Commissioner Belcher, if I could get you to deliver these.
My pleasure.
And Mr. Perron, if we could get you to come up. In competition with communication departments and public relation firms representing the largest cities and counties across the country, Buncombe County was recently awarded Silver Circle and Award of Excellence by the City-County Communication and Marketing Association. They were top awards against every other applicant in the country. It wasn't just a regional award. These awards were made for outstanding graphic design and electronic media for the Slave Deeds exhibit. The judges said this unique project combined artful storytelling and excellent graphic design to reflect the county's past. Quote, "An example of excellent communication bringing an otherwise dry and uncomfortable part of history to the public forefront." Ms. Perron, if you could tell us a little bit about that, we would appreciate, we have the, if you could zoom in, if you can, on the awards there. We're mighty proud of those. Those are first, what, let's see, second and third-place awards in the entire country, I believe. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. Tell us more. Tell us about it.
Let's see. Hi, my name's Cataldo Perron. I'm the multimedia specialist here at Buncombe County. The Forever Free Project started when Deborah Miles from UNCA Center of Diversity of Education and her students started transcribing these slave deeds. Our Register of Deeds Drew found this quite compelling event and began converting them to digital form. He made them readily available to the public on our county website, and this provides a starting point for citizens researching their genealogy as well as preserving history. This unique project combined heartfelt citizen interviews with powerful archive photography to reflect our county's past and shed a new light on an otherwise dark and uncomfortable part of our history. I would like to also add that this project was an excellent example of community and government collaboration. It involved our Register of Deeds, the UNCA Center of Diversity Education, PAC Library, voice actors, local geneologists, and local historians, and it was an amazing project, and I'm very honored to be a part of it. And if you haven't watched the video, you can go see it at buncom county.org/slavedeeds. Thanks.
Wonderful. Let's give them a hand. That's fantastic stuff. We are so proud of that project, because it's important to, it is uncomfortable, but I think it's something that needs to be brought up and discussed and talked about and just put the cards on the table. That happened. It's reprehensible, but it's part of our past, and we, the best way to deal with it is to be honest about it. Dr. Green, I believe there's some more special guests that you, I'd ask you to introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, one of the organizations that brings us such great support and we really appreciate working with is our State Association of County Commissioners, and today we have with us Patrice Rossler and David Nicholson from the State Association.
Come on up and tell us what the state does. Y'all come right up. I know David can do that. Come on, David. We really appreciate, we rely so much on the state organization, and we appreciate your work to give us the best practices and tell us what everybody's doing and what we're doing wrong and right and compiling a lot of statistics for us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here. This is a part of my continuing education, to attend the Board of Commissioners meetings and then to meet with the manager tomorrow to see what happens after you all meet. So I'm delighted to be here and actually see this play out. So thank you, and we're certainly here to help you do whatever you need of us.
Well, David, we appreciate your good work in Henderson County and various other places. You're well-known to our region. It's good to have you home.
Just to comment on that, as a new Commissioner, David Kingham and myself had the opportunity to go to, well, we've, several, a couple of NACO events, but one of the things that I noticed when I, particularly when I went to the one in Raleigh, is how that the, this organization exists to put a hedge around this county and to protect the county from dollars that can be pushed down to us. They have a lot of great goals and ways that they do that, and it was a pleasure to learn and to grow at their meetings, and they put a lot of effort in them, provide a lot of great information to particularly new commissioners to enable us to, as a board, to do a better job. And it is a day and time where we have to do our best to keep that hedge up around the county and to protect our constituents first, and y'all do a good work in providing that assistance to us, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, and welcome. Hope you have a good stay here, and David, again, good to have you home. Next up, we have proclamation, Minority Enterprise Development Week. Vice Chair Jones, if you'll read it, and Sharon, if you'll come up. Sharon Oxendine?
Hi. Come on in. Good to see you.
Good to see you, too. Our new digs. Well, I'm proud to do this proclamation for a number of reasons. One is it's a city-county proclamation, and I think every time we have opportunity to kind of say to the community and to the world that, you know, we have these goals that are in sync, I think it's a great, sends a great message to our citizens. Also, I think everybody on our board is so concerned with the economic vitality of our community, and the minority businesses are contributing to that very much. They're hiring people, contributing to the tax base, and this is gonna be a growing part of our future, too. We know the demographics, and it's important that we are cultivating these business owners and we are expanding the past. So we have this proclamation, and then after I read it for the people and into the record, I'd love for you to share about maybe some of the things that are coming on this week. Is that okay? Great. So here's the proclamation. Whereas strong and vibrant communities involve all citizens in economic progress, and whereas minority entrepreneurs make significant contributions to our economy, and whereas as we enter into an era of expanded opportunities in economic growth and development and face the economic challenges ahead, is appropriate that we encourage minority business owners by recognizing their contributions towards the continued economic development of our community. Whereas nationally, Minority Enterprise Development Week is recognized for its importance as economic challenges continue on the national level, and whereas Minority Enterprise Development Week of Western North Carolina Incorporated has provided training and a week-long celebration of minority-owned businesses for the past 30 years, and whereas local observance of Minority Enterprise Development Week will be the week of September the 23rd through the 27th, 2013. Now, therefore, Terry Embelamy, Mayor of the City of Asheville, and David Gant, Chairman of the Board of Commissioners for Buncombe County, do hereby proclaim the week of September the 23rd through the 27th as Minority Enterprise Development Week. In the City of Asheville and the County of Buncombe, and urge all citizens to join the minority develop, excuse me, the minority business enterprises of our community in appropriate observances. So, thank you. Would you like to?
I'd give you a hug.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'm Sharon Oxendine, and I'm also celebrating eight to nine years of being on the Medweek Board. I have been working in economic development for 11 years here in this county, and I have made it my priority to make sure that minority people in this area have been given the stance that they need and also the platform they need. Last week in the Asheville Citizens Times, they ran a story on Kimberly Hunter and two of our Native American people who I can't remember their names, but, or the name of the business right now, but they were given a platform, and that's what I'm here to do, is I advocate for minority businesses. As Holly said, since 1983, President Reagan declared Minority Enterprise Development Week. Here in this area in Buncombe County, we've been celebrating that now. This year will be our 30th year. James Lee is the chair. He wasn't here today. I'm the Secretary of the Board this time, and I continue to be interested in giving this opportunity to minorities. So next week, on September the 26th, Thursday, at Homewood, we will be having our awards celebration. I'd like to encourage you, Chair of the Board and all of the Board members, to attend that. The more support you can give to our members and our also businesses coming forward, the more that we feel like we will be able to do with this. We have a lot of sponsors in this area, and we're real appreciative of the fact of this proclamation, so thank you very much. Yeah. I take this, right?
Yeah, sure. Have it all. Make sure I'm not stealing this.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Commissioner Frost is gonna give the YMI 120th Anniversary Certificate to Sharon West and Richard Fort. Thank you for being here, Sharon, and your leadership.
And before I read this, I just want to say what it means to have the YMI there. The path hasn't always been easy, but what that YMI stands for and the presence, it's strong and capable, and I thank you for persevering and keeping the YMI what it is. But today, Buncombe County Commissioners recognize and honor the YMI Cultural Center. On behalf of the citizens of Buncombe County, this board expresses its sincere appreciation and support for the YMI Cultural Center on the occasion of its 120th anniversary. We commend you for preserving, promoting, and presenting a portion of the cultural history of our community. You have truly made this community a better place to live. We honor and thank you that this, the 17th day of September, 2013.
Buncombe County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you wanna say a few words?
Sure. I do. Chairman Gant and Vice Chair Jones and all the Commissioners just want to say thank you on behalf of the YMI Cultural Center and my Vice Chair over there, Richard Fort, and we just say how thrilled we are 120 years later, when three men came together with a vision and a dream and presented it to Mr. Vanderbilt, and Mr. Vanderbilt and his attorney, Charles McNamie, said this would be a good thing to do. And today, we want to say that we are very focused and committed to the three streams that we identified in doing some historical research and preparing for our 120th, and that was education, entrepreneurship, and economics. So we are excited about programs that we're starting at the YMI to focus on the youth. We're excited about offering volunteer income tax assistance to low-income individuals. We're excited about starting roles and programs related to entrepreneurship and asset management, economic freedom, and to make sure people know how to manage their assets properly. So thank you so much for this, and we will treasure this proclamation on behalf of the Board of the YMI.
Thank you, Ms. West. Interesting, today is the 206th anniversary of our Constitution, another pretty important document that we, an important icon in our community and our country, and thank you. It is amazing to think 120 years that this group has been challenging and pushing the envelope. There are a lot of groups that don't last 120 days, not 120 years.
And one thing I'd like to say is that the Forever Free documents will be at the YMI on exhibition October the 1st through November 1st, so.
Thank you so much. Great leadership, and thank all of you at YMI. Next, we have county manager report. We're gonna hear from Ms. Mandy Stone about the LME transition update.
Judy's gonna pull up a few slides, Chairman and Commissioners. I really want to focus tonight on the two advocacy issues that I think are important for this board to be aware of as we move forward, but do feel like I have to give a little background. As many of you will recall, we were forced into a merger a little sooner than we anticipated, although we knew that that was the state plan to merge LMEs, MCOs across the state, when DMA decided not to renew the Western Highlands contract for managing the Medicaid waiver. We were instructed to move forward in partnership with Smoky Mountain Center and began the development of a management agreement, and what that technically means is that Smoky Mountain Center will run the mental health service delivery system for Western Highlands for the remainder of this fiscal year, once the agreement's signed, for both Medicaid and state dollars. So that's the change. Then the two organizations will merge into a single organization at the direction of the state. So that's important to keep in mind. I'd also say that the other piece that will be in front of the Western Highlands Board is the actual closeout of the entity, the legal closeout of the entity. So those are probably the three big steps in front of us. All right, Judy, I don't think they see it.
Nope.
They all see it. There you go. The map, I want to begin with them, well, I want to begin with the map, because I think it speaks to the point that Mr. Rice raised. If you look at the map, there are 11 LMEs across the state, MCOs, LME. In this map, Smoky Mountain represents the blue, the royal blue, and Western Highlands, the green. I would ask you to also pay attention to the yellow in the bottom corner, which represents Partners, and to the orange to the north of Smoky Mountain, which represents Center Point. I'd ask you to pay attention to those, because those represent the counties that Mr. Rice referenced are considered likely further mergers across the LME. Before I talk a little bit about that, I did want to begin by saying, many of you will recall, as Western Highlands moved into the waiver, there were issues about financially sustainability and about the actual sustainability of our business model. I think this board passed a resolution prior to that, us moving into a Medicaid waiver raising concerns that we weren't ready as an LME to move into a waiver environment, and that certainly proved true. But when I came to you last year, I would have reported, and that would have been accurate, that we were running a $6.8 million deficit last year at Western Highlands. I would report to you today that we are, have very solid numbers, that we will finish this year at a $7 million surplus, and will have added $6 million to our risk assessment, our risk assessment pool, which required to get up to 15%. So we have made substantial progress around the financial viability of that organization, and that's really been our focus, because even though we're facing merger, the strength of the final organization, the merger between the two is really based on the strength of the two organizations moving forward. So we really did need to strengthen our financial position, and I think this is an example. David and I are having the debate before the meeting. Were county managers a good model for governance on that board? I think this is an example where where we sit now financially is very much reflective of county managers sitting on that board. But I did want to make that point. I also wanted to make that point, that that $13 million turnaround, none of that came from service dollars. That's all about administration, business model, our ability to better project what's called an IBNR, which are expenses we've incurred but not yet been reported, which are part of a waiver environment.
Can I interrupt you for just a second?
Sure.
Say that's excellent, and second, can you, can you say what happens with the $7 million surplus, just for?
Sure. It will transfer in the merger and be part of the overall service organization, and once you reach in the waiver environment, a 15% risk pull max, then you have flexibility to design services in a unique or different way, and they can differ LME to LME or MCO to MCO, which was our incentive for moving into a waiver environment.
Okay, thank you.
So it's, that's very positive. This actually, and I want to just spend a minute on this map, because I think this shows you what we would look like, all of the dark blue being the combined organization, which would not be Smoky Mountain, would actually have a new name and a new brand as Western Highlands and Smoky merged. This includes Center Point and Partners, which we believe are a likely next step, which is, Mr. Rice mentioned, would be 35 counties, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about how that fits in the state's plan for Medicaid reform in just a minute. I did want to address an issue I know that is of concern always to this board. In the two, combining of the two staffs of Western Highlands and Smoky Mountain, all staff were allowed to apply for positions in the, in the management agreement in the future merged organization, and out of the close, 457 employees across those two organizations, there were only 36 refs, and those include people who decided to retire or chose not to apply for positions going forward. So most people, although they may be doing a different job, did keep their job and remain within the larger combined organization. I would also say that from an economic development perspective for Buncombe, we had about 200 jobs that sat in Buncombe County. We continue to have 200 jobs that sit in Buncombe County, and the potential for future growth because of some of the resources we bring to the table. And I know that's an issue that's always foremost in this board's mind. Okay. This really is a point I want to spend a few minutes talking about, and I said there are two advocacy points. One of those is from a practice, a clinical practice perspective, and I'll spend a few minutes talking about that. There are eight counties in the Western Highlands network that's a little over 529,000 in total population. Buncombe County comprises 46% of that total. Buncombe County's population would be 86% of the total of the other seven, and I want to spend a few minutes on this next slide, talking about why I think that's important. I know this is very hard to see. These are the 23 counties represented between Western Highlands and Smoky Mountain. I would tell you, Buncombe's population, most recent census data is 245,500. Henderson, which is the next largest county, is 108,000, less than half of our size. And if you took that map and drew a red line, after the third county, which is Caldwell, the City of Asheville is larger than every other county in the combined district. And I think that's important, because I think urban counties have different mental health needs in terms of practice delivery. We're more challenged by ED diverse- We're more challenged by ED diversion, emergency department diversion, we're more challenged by jail diversion, homelessness, veterans' needs in the mental health arena and in our school systems. And I raise that for you as I move into the next issue around governance because I think it's so critical we have a voice on the combined board. Because while those other 22 counties can represent each other in that their service models are very similar, there is not another county that can represent the mental health issues specific to Buncombe County. You also contribute more county resources to the mental health system than other counties do, some of which may have a regional application as we move forward. We have to talk through, how do we cost allocate that to other counties like our crisis stabilization unit? I want to talk a little bit about the current Western Highlands Board. There are 16, there are eight counties and 16 members, which means you have two appointments to that board. By resolution of the eight counties and Western Highlands Board itself, one of those appointments has always been a county manager's seat and one a community seat. You all recently appointed Janet Farrow, Janet Price Farrell, who is a consumer advocate in the DD world. So, those are the two seats you currently have. That's really important as we move forward because we move to a system that has 23 counties and by statute, 21 maximum seats. That means two counties will have no representation on that board. I consider that critical to Buncombe and really want to make that point. I think that's a major change. That's reflective of Senate Bill 208, which was effective in July. I'm not going to spend any time on this except to tell you, 13 of those seats are specified in law by area of expertise. Only eight of those seats are at-large. And the conversation right now is that Western Highlands Board would appoint, would bring to commissioners recommendations for four of those at-large seats, and that Smoky would bring to their commissioners recommendations for the other four. I think that's a major advocacy issue, is that every county ought to have representation on an LME board. And I want to make sure that's something you're aware of as you travel in state circles and as we rely on our state partners for advocacy around that issue.
Why did they limit it to 25?
Actually, it's 21, and it actually is in the law. They basically said the board's become too large and unproductive as you have more and more counties combined. Counties are so impacted by mental health services. We're impacted in our schools, our emergency departments, our jails, our social services, our public health, our nonprofits. It is a major concern moving forward, and I really want to talk a little bit about this. At the, trying to find the right words to describe this, the General Assembly appeared to throw counties a bone and say, you can have an advisory board with one representative from all of the counties. But in that same statute, it says that that advisory board has no authority over budget, personnel, governance, or policymaking. So, I'm not real sure what they advise the LME on, but not those things by statute. Each county sets the terms of that advisory board in terms of the joint counties, so that would be the 23 counties, will decide how frequently do they meet, the format of the meeting, and if they want a role for their county managers. I will tell you that the Western Highlands and Smoky Board are going to bring a recommendation to their 23 boards of commissioners, that the chair of each of those boards and the county manager, with Buncombe being the host, invite the other chairs and county managers to meet in Buncombe at least every quarter to address mental health issues and to offer advice on that. And that we are bringing to you, which is a discussion I've had with Dr. Green, the county managers are bringing a recommendation to their boards that that would offer an opportunity for those commission chairs and county managers to talk broader regional issues. If we scheduled a half-day or a full morning every quarter, we could also talk about regional issues around things like economic development or other challenges or opportunities for partnership broader than mental health. I will tell you, because I think I want to end on potential solutions. Senate Bill 208 does say that if an MCO reaches the population of 1.25 million, that they can have a different board structure. If we merged with Center Point and Partners in addition and got to 35 counties, we would meet that 1.25 million. We're only slightly over a million between Western Highlands and Smoky. That would allow us to design our own board outside the current context of the law. Would also tell you, the association continues to have this be a legislative priority, and I hope particularly commissioners in Voucher and King and others who are involved in it lend your voice to that advocacy, that every county needs a seat at the table around mental health issues. I would also tell you, the General Assembly, as you know, the secretary put for, I'm sorry.
How many more counties would you have to have to get to that number?
Go from 23 to 35 counties. So, it'd basically be the original blue map, I mean, the second blue map, which is basically, this is probably a good one to look at for this discussion, the western part of the state. Most of you know that the secretary has proposed a model for Medicaid reform, a capitated Medicaid system that's managed through some type of managed care organization in regional capacities. The MCO believes that this puts them in a positive footing for moving forward under Medicaid reform. Would tell you that both the secretary and the Division of Medical Assistance Director are very clear that they don't see a role for MCOs specifically as we move forward with Medicaid reform. So, it's not clear what that Medicaid reform model will ultimately look like. But the General Assembly is, does have both a study commission looking at it and also has set deadlines for the Department of Health and Human Resources to bring them a proposal. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but would ask your help in advocating around the need for additional representation for every county on the board, and then making sure that in every setting, including the advisory group, that the chairman will bring together, that we make sure Buncombe's voice is heard as the only urban county. I'm happy to answer any questions.
When will we, and you may have said this and I missed it, but when do you expect the 35 counties and the 1.25 million, when do you expect that to happen?
We think we'll finish the Smoky Mountain-Western Highlands merger this year, so probably about halfway through next year is when we'd move into those other counties. I would say that at least one of those other LMEs was presenting this past week to their boards of commissioners and to the LME board, a recommendation to begin talks with Smoky Western Highland about merger. So, they have some incentive to merge because they're trying to align themselves well so we all have a place in Medicaid reform.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Debbie Trumpy about the land use plan update. Thank you for being here, Ms. Trumpy.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, members of the board. We do have a presentation on this land use plan update. The land use plan was initially adopted in 1998, and we've had one update that was done in 2006. We again wanted to update that plan to account for the changes that the county's seen since 2006. I would like to point out that this is a planning document. It does not change any regulations at this point, any recommendations. Four changes would have to go through appropriate boards, advertisements, public hearings, and that sort of thing to make these into law. This is recommendations and a look at the current situation in the county and a review of past planning efforts. The update examines some key demographic information such as population totals and projections, population distribution geographically and by age and income. It looks at changes in development trends. We've examined new construction permits, both residential and commercial, looked at total numbers by geographic distribution, and examined the residential real estate market in total sales and price. The update also investigates changes in the economy, including top employers and the current industry structure. And in gathering this information and considering it, the comprehensive land use plan update creates a baseline for land use in the county. This plan update, through examining demographics and trends and reviewing previous planning efforts, provides a basis to make recommendations for future planning efforts. This update makes recommendations that will refine the planning and review process in order to improve our services, and also adjusts and clarifies recommendations made in the '98 plan and the 2006 update. The planning department began working on the comprehensive land use plan update with our consultant, CDM Smith, back in the fall of 2012. The plan was drafted in sections, and each was submitted to the planning board. The planning board reviewed each section over a number of meetings in early 2013. They took public comment and made recommendations as the sections were reviewed. The planning board unanimously recommended approval of the compiled draft at their June 3rd meeting. The draft was made available online, and a hard copy was made available at each of The key components of this update are specific recommendations that are made. There are recommendations for several new zoning districts. A resort district is recommended to address the unique needs of our large-scale resort and conference facilities, such as Luther Ridge, the Cove, and the Biltmore Estate. This district would accommodate the varied uses that occur on these properties as well as their unique patterns of development. The airport overlay district is recommended to establish height limitations required for compliance with Federal Aviation Regulations Part 77 in order to protect our navigable airspace. An airport industrial district is also recommended to address the needs of the Asheville Regional Airport as well as to allow industrial and commercial uses that are related to the operation of the airport. It would also account for the Federal Aviation Administration's requirement that residential properties are adequately protected from airport impacts. This plan recommends several new types of planned unit developments be created in order to tailor the application and review process to the specific type of development being proposed. Currently, there's a single type of planned unit development, no matter whether the proposal is residential or commercial, and regardless of intensity or density. This process results in applications that may not adequately address specifically, specific concerns associated with each type of development. The new types of planned unit developments that are recommended are residential, commercial, mixed-use, and affordable workforce housing. In the case of the affordable workforce housing planned unit development, increases in density would be granted in exchange for guarantees that units remain affordable for a certain period of time. Another recommendation is that regulations be revised to allow staff approval of non-compliant ADA retrofits. This would expedite approvals and lower costs to the applicant. Decisions could still be deferred to appropriate boards if there's a larger community impact or the need for the retrofit is unclear. Another recommendation is that regulations accommodate cohousing and intentional community-type residential options. Cohousing involves both shared housing and shared communities with common infrastructure. Our current regulations may limit such communities and thus restrict opportunities for seniors, agricultural communities, and other communities established around a specific purpose. This update also recommends reductions and setbacks in lot sizes and appropriate circumstances. Lot sizes would be adjusted based on the surrounding land use and the availability of public water and sewer. Reductions and setbacks in lot size are also recommended to promote affordable and workforce housing and smart growth. The plan recommends an increased structure height be considered within commercial zoning districts through the planned unit development conditional use process. This would allow the board to address the merits of each site without requiring the applicant to apply for a variance and prove a hardship as it currently is. Another recommendation is that proposed projects be evaluated based on factors known to influence the suitability of a site for a particular use. The plan contains a suitability assessment table, which outlines the appropriate site characteristics for various categories of development. This will enable boards to make sound decisions based on the specific characteristics of a site, and it will also inform potential developers of the site characteristics that are appropriate for particular types of development. The conditions that are recommended to be used to evaluate a site are shown on this map. They are proximity to transportation corridors, proximity to public water and sewer, slope, elevation, slope stability, and flood hazard areas. The plan contains maps that show these conditions countywide, and detailed information at the parcel level is available on the county's GIS site. Here's an example of how this information would be used. There are three sites on that map that are outlined in pink, and they're in the general, same general location, and you would think that they might have similar characteristics. But the sites vary widely. The top right is in the water and sewer service area and close to a transportation quarter. The site on the bottom, sort of middle bottom there, is about the same distance from a transportation quarter, but it's not in a public water sewer service area. It has steep slopes, high elevations, and areas designated as high and moderate hazard on the slope stability index map. The top left site is on a transportation corridor and is in a public water and sewer service area, but it also has an area that's in the 100-year flood plain. During the approval process, an applicant would note the factors on the site that make the proposed development compatible, and would address any circumstances where recommendations can't be achieved, and would provide mitigation for those circumstances. This plan contains a series of recommendations for changes and additions to existing land use regulations and policies. As we modify and improve our regulations, efforts should be made to incorporate the recommendations of this plan update. The county staff and decision-making bodies should use the recommendations within this document to guide their actions and to achieve our stated goals. This plan update details current conditions and provides overall direction and guidance for land use and development in our county. And we request that you adopt this plan as was recommended by the planning board at their June 3rd meeting. I'd be happy to address any questions you have.
Any questions for Ms. Trumpy?
I have one, one maybe. This seems to work hand in glove with our sustainability plan, and...
Oh, thank you. This seems to work hand in glove with our sustainability plan. And with a growing trend, this is coming from Land of Sky, of wanting health concerns and advocacy, is it possible to put some language in linking it to our sustainability plan?
We did discuss our sustainability plan and do have the mission statement and mention that it is part of our strategic plan. We can certainly add a sentence that does say that we would do adopt the goals and objectives of the sustainability plan as part of this plan.
I just think it would be good to reinforce that, and so that... I just think it would be good to reinforce that and so the two documents are more linked.
We'd certainly do that.
Any other questions or comments?
I've got, I've got a few comments. One, I want to, I want to thank you for reducing it from its original size to 104 pages. I appreciate that very much. And excellent job. There's a lot of hard work in that document, and I don't think most people know how long it takes and the way it was very well-written to where you could read it, and I encourage, if you don't have a copy of it, to get a copy of it and go through it. There were some words that struck me in it, and one, there were several. Flexibility was throughout it, the word recommendation, these were key recommendations. Streamline, clarify, those were all terms that I appreciated. The other thing is that throughout the document, there was a lot of mentioning of affordable housing, and even to the point where you mentioned affordable home ownership, and I appreciate that also. There was good positive news in there, and the suitability assessments you mentioned earlier, that there are sites that could be site-specific for certain things, and the public would continue to understand that they can come through the processes that we have now, through the Board of Adjustment for variances or concerns, and this Board would address them. So I think it's a, it's a good plan with a lot of built-in flexibility, and I'm encouraged by the hard work that y'all did on it, and I thank you for it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions or thoughts about this land use plan?
I would just echo the appreciation for, it's a lot of work and, but we've been needing it for a long time, so I appreciate the staff. And even as recently as, what was it, six months ago, we identified an issue and y'all were open to incorporating some of that thinking into helping a frame for, and so I think you've served us well. We are a growing community, and these are documents that we need to, you know, come back to and if, I guess that's one thing I did want to say, is that I'm open and I'm sure other people on the Board are open too, as we find things that are working or if they're not working, you know, let's have that discussion because none of us have a complete crystal ball of these things. I think the thought has been very analytical and scientific and appropriate to our community, and I've got all the confidence in the world, but if there's ways that we can improve it in the short run, let's do that too.
Was it 2006 that the last one was done, or you and I were talking about that earlier? I get the dates mixed up, but...
The, the plan was adopted in 1998 initially. There was a 2006 update that was a major update. There was a very small update done in 2009 which just established the Beaver Dam zoning district as a district unto itself.
And to Holly's point, there was, there was actually some recommendations that were made that were referenced in this report that didn't work, and y'all acknowledged that, you know, and put those in there, which, you know, again emphasizes the fact that this is a plan, and it also says it's a, it's a living document, so changes can happen. And, you know, if we see something, you know, like Commissioner Jones has mentioned, we can make those changes, so thank you.
I just would comment, I guess I was on the Board when we passed the first one. It was a pretty heated discussion, if I remember right. Folks, you know, I've said this many times, many ways, we have a moral obligation to take care of our environment while we balance the rights of people to develop their land, and it's always tough. It's always a tough, tough balance to make that work right, and every community has a different balance point. But I think that with the things we've done through the years based on the land use plan, it reaffirms the concept that you have to have a target to know if you hit the bullseye. If you don't have a place to aspire to, to think about, and it's Commissioner Frost's very well put, you have to go back to the basics, the sustainability plan. It's all got to be tied to that. And so I think this is a great plan. I particularly like your charts because I think that the more we can compare things and look, how are we doing on flood hazard zones, low density, proximity to major transportation corridors? If we have the factors set out and then we can kind of compare how we're doing with each step we take, I think we keep more on track with what the public wants. They want us to take care of things but respect our property rights, and I think this Board is loud and clear in favor of that, and I appreciate the presentation and the, and the hours and hours of work it took to put this together. Thank you. Bye, else? Okay, let's, I have, let me take your motion as an amendment to this land use plan. I think Commissioner Frost has made a motion to reaffirm the connection of this plan to our sustainability plan, which was passed earlier. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to that amendment to the land use plan? Or should we do the plan first and do the amendment? What would be the preferable?
I think that you can, if you want to have the amending language, that you would be okay doing it.
Just do it this way? Okay, thank you. Okay, so there's a, there's a motion to add to, and where would this be added? Where would be the best place?
At the end probably, or...
In the sustainability, the page on sustainability and the mention of the plan, it does talk about the triple-tier approach. I think that would be where we would want to say that that is incorporated into this plan.
Okay, is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, good.
There's also a summary page on it.
Maybe that and the summary page.
Yeah, there's also a summary page. It might be good to add it there too.
All right. Okay, is there a second to the motion to amendment to add sustainability at the, at the two parts we discussed? Second. Second by Commissioner King, is there any other discussion of the amendment? And then we'll have our vote on the full land use plan as amended, if it's passed. If not, yes, sir.
This don't change anything far as what she went down through the airport, you know, let's figuring out heights and stuff. That, that's opening up a little bit from where we had discussions before, so this don't hurt any of that.
I do not think it would.
No.
No, that would not.
Because we do need to do, we have bumped up against the airport overlay several times, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Okay, good question. Okay, any other questions or discussion of the amendment? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the amendment as proposed to add sustainability language to the two parts to the land use plan, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then we have an amendment. Is there a motion to adopt the land use plan as amended?
No, moved.
Here's a motion by Commissioner Frost, a second by Commissioner Newman. Is there any discussion of the overall plan? Is there any more discussion, I should say? I think we've discussed it pretty long out in private sessions. Any other discussion tonight? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion carries seven, both the amendment and the motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Thank you for your hard work, and thank you for Planning Board members to put the time in. Next, we have, well, we have a scout here. Why don't you come up and tell us what your, tell us, Scout Master or Scout, if you'd tell us your name and what you're working on. We're always glad to have members of the Scouts here. I know you didn't plan on that, maybe the Scout Master. How can you tell? You just tell us what troop you're from and maybe your names.
Hi, I'm from, I'm Alex Van Allen, I'm from Troop 77. I'm just here to finish a few requirements for a, for my communications merit badge.
Great.
And my name is Alexander Van Daleen Sr., and again, Troop 77, not a Scout Master, but Scout leader.
Well, we're so glad. Thank you for your, your participation in the community, and best wishes on your communication badge. I hope we've helped in some part to, to get there. We have a lot of Scouts, and if we hadn't done the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd get you to lead that, but we were already past that, so thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
You ought to get an automatic checkmark for being on TV. You go back and tell them that.
All right, next up, we have board appointments. We have Tourism Development Authority. We have three appointments, one rep less than 100 rooms, one rep more than 100 rooms, and we have one reappointment. Are there any, I think since we have, we just interviewed these folks, let's just, I'll just ask the clerk to poll the, I won't say the jury, although I've said that more times than I've said Commissioners, so poll the Commissioners.
We got one reappointment.
Let's, let's just do the, let's, I think we can do them all. There's one reappointment and two, well, no, it might be better.
What if I make a nomination for the reappointment of Steve Frabatory?
Okay, let's just do it that way, okay. All those in favor of Mr. Frabatory, any other nominations? Well, there's only one reappointment possible, so is there, I'll take that as a motion to reappoint him. All those in favor of reappointing Mr. Frabatory, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. So Mr. Frabatory is reappointed by 7-0 vote. Now, we have three candidates and two positions, so I think I'll just poll the Commissioners and ask the clerk to poll.
John McKibben and Chip Craig.
John McKibben and Chip Craig.
John McKibben and John Winkenwerter.
Winkenwerter and Craig.
McKibben and Craig.
Winkenwerter and Craig.
McKibben and Winkenwerter.
McKibben and Craig.
Winkenwerter and Craig.
McKibben and Craig.
Winkenwerter and McCraig.
McKibben and Winkenwerther.
It looks like Craig and McKibben.
Okay.
No, it's not.
Uh-uh.
No, it's not. It's Winkenwerter.
Who, who supported?
Hold your hands for Winkenwerter.
Four. And who supported Craig?
That's your two.
And who supported McKibben, just to make it, oh, no, three, okay.
And Mike Pryor did as well.
No, Mike Pryor did as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's 14 votes with sevens.
McKibben, but there's a tie between Craig and Winkenwerter, is that right? That's what I just, that's what...
No, I think it's five, two fives and one four.
Four for Winkenwerter.
Because...
There's five for McKibben, right?
And there's five for Craig.
Were there five for Craig again? Can we just raise our hands again for, if you're for Chip Craig?
Craig.
Okay, yeah, there were.
Yep. It's counterintuitive because there's 14 votes, but usually you need four, but because of the way the math works. Right.
All right, so we, we have appointed McKibben and Craig. Okay. Airport Authority, one appointment. We have three candidates. Is there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Harold Peterson.
All right. Former Commissioner Peterson has been nominated. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Ken Hawkins.
Mr. Ken Hawkins has been nominated. Any other nominations? All right, let's go ahead and keep the polling Commissioners in.
Carol Peterson.
Carol Peterson.
Ken Hawkins.
Peterson.
Peterson.
Hawkins.
Peterson.
So former Commissioner Peterson is appointed to that. We have a vacancy, the County Board of Adjustment, we have one vacancy with the deadline of September 30th.
Seven.
And I believe we have deduced, no, no change in our no closed session report from about an hour ago. All right, if so, there's, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, moved.
Is there any, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
I ain't figured it out yet. I'm still lost in that one.